Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The whole call shows the record, let the record show that Bob, Carol, and Ed are here. Flavi is on the way, and Doug will not be present today. And our attorney is on the way stuck out from the interstate somewhere. Approval of the final agenda, any changes or adjustments to it?
No, sir.
Second.
No, sir.
All of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Tony. Come and comment.
I have one.
We have one.
One, one topic. Tom Murphy, he has two topics. One is Agenda Item 9C, the other is a non-agenda item. Just a reminder, you have three minutes.
You're in luck tonight, my comments are all pretty quick.
Please state your name for the record.
Tom Murphy, Stony Brook. I have three items that I'd like to bring to your attention. First, I want to thank Chelsea and her team for their cooperation and assistance in helping us mend down the balance of the OO4 funds within our community, they've given us great guidance, so we appreciate that. With that said, we have before you on your agenda, Item 9C. I want to let you know that our entire board supports your approval of this item. So it's on there, and we would hope that you would approve it when the time comes. Item two, on May 9th, I submitted a request to Doug, who's not here unfortunately, and subsequently on the 16th, a copy to Chelsea. And my request was to be exempted from Resolution 202507, the utility availability fee policy. I was wondering if any decision has been made with regard to the request. And I also have copies, if you'd like them.
Any exceptions, they'll have to come in front of the board as a formal request.
Okay, so here I am at a formal request, so I can give you copies of what I made, what I sent.
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Shall I leave the copy?
Okay.
Here the copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was on the fee schedule?
This was on the utility fee schedule with regards to the empty parcels being charged availability fees.
Okay, my last item, the lake restoration in our community is coming, has come to an end. The next step in that area since all the new order control and fencing for the lift station, our board was told that the CDD would not be paying to replace the shrubs and landscaping that was there. We were told to ask supervisors to replace it, so I am here to request that the CDD restore the landscape that was removed in order to perform the lake restoration.
Why would we not add landscaping as part of the project?
We don't replace shrubs, we replace sod, that has typically been the policy for all of our lake banks.
So, but is this something that's in the, in an easement?
Yes.
And so I've taken pictures, I did not bring them with me, but of course, we could provide them.
So who's responsible for putting in the shrubbery?
The HOA, if they should re-install it.
So it's too good with the owner of the easements?
We own the easement.
I don't mean the, who's the owner of the easement? Who owns the property?
Yeah.
Property owner, okay. So it'd be just like any other, between two houses, if we go between two houses, we replace the sod, but not the landscape?
Correct.
Same thing around a utility box in the neighborhood?
Correct.
So I guess then that would be a no. Is that correct?
You got it, Tom.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
All right, I don't have anything else.
Anything else?
Nope, no more, hold up five minutes.
Stop, stop, I'm trying to get Flavi here before you, we have the...
Do you want to go to the next side of Mike?
Yeah, let's do that, because I know Flavi would want to be here for that too. Advisory Committee items and reports?
We provided the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee report on behalf of Peggy, and if there's any questions, please let us know. So the board has...
It was very informative.
I will say that we did not receive the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee report. They did not provide that in time for this agenda, but we will make sure, I think they're on hiatus this summer.
Did they have a meeting, or was it canceled?
No, they did.
But I think they're after like September.
Yeah, I believe like many of the other committees and subcommittees, they've taken off this summer, since a lot of folks are traveling and they won't have forum. But, yeah, you asked that your direct committees provided a monthly report, and so Pratt did not provide it, but CPAC did.
Approval of minutes, anybody have any ones they want to hold, or approval of A through D?
I move approval of A, B, C, and D.
Second. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There you go. Consent agenda items.
They better hurry up.
Does anybody want to pull any of the consent agenda items, A through E?
I move on agenda items like A, B, C, D, and E.
Your second.
I'll say it.
Thanks, Bob.
And Tony, do we pay you by the word?
You got off cheap.
Is this a flat fee, or is this per word?
It's per piping for it, and my typing skills are horrible. No, but it was, the benefit of this is, this is based upon the length of 2020, so it's just a matter of bringing it current, so.
Carol, every word I correct a piss, we get money back.
The explanation. The explanation was as long as the paragraph.
I think you need a credit.
Chelsea overcorrects to get more credit. And ID was a mini book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, I have a motion on the floor, a second, to approve consent agenda items A through E. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I saw Flavi had pulled in, but if you want to get Tetra Tech, so that way they can be gone.
Yeah.
Check, we're going to get you, so you can be gone.
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Thanks, guys. This is Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so first up, we have the irrigation pump station generator. The contractor has the permit in hand, they just sent us an updated schedule this week. They plan to break ground the week of July 14th, so next month, and that will go through August, September, if everything goes well. Irrigation enforcement improvements, we have submitted...
Is this that generator that we've been waiting for, for like two years?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
We got it.
It's here. Okay, thank you.
Do we have to thank you up?
No.
Go ahead, Steve.
Irrigation enforcement improvements, we have submitted to SRF a request for inclusion to be considered for construction funding for the irrigation enforcement project. So that will go to FDP SRF's August hearing. So we'll, we'll find out in late August whether or not that was approved for construction funds. And at the same time, it's being reviewed by HMGP for funding. Lower Hawthorne well, that project is getting close to the end. We're waiting on restoration of the site and completion of the fence for that to get completed. Gateway utility storage building, the building has been erected. Contractor got the overhead door hung last week. They're working on landscaping and some punch list items to, to finish that project up. FY24 lakes, these are MRI's lakes. Walkthrough was completed last week, so there's a punch list out there they are working on to wrap that up. FY25 lakes, Met Tower completed two, and CMB completed another two. Both of the contractors are working on their punch list to close out those. There will be two other lakes as part of this project that are going to get delayed until the next dry season.
Steve, Steve question on that, just getting questions from people in the committee. Have all of the sluice gates been closed?
I don't, I think they were closed. I think they've been closed for a while, I'm not sure. That'd be a good question for Paul, or Stephanie, or Elle.
Reason I ask is, we don't see water levels rising, and we've been getting some pretty good rains, so.
Yeah, I've noticed that too, even in my neighborhood. I was just looking at the drought map, we're still in a severe drought, so it may take a while for it to rebound.
Thank you.
Lakebank restoration, HMGP surveying has been ordered, surveyor's been out in the field, and we've been working on the backend, pulling all the historic permitting data, landscaping plans, and everything else to, to start working on the design of those lakes. Public Works Storage Building, we got the approved task authorization at the last meeting. Eric is going to be working on that project, and I think people are already lined up and starting to work on that. Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building, the first lift has been completed and graded for the building. The next step is the footers, that'll probably happen next week. And they are also grading on the east side of the property for the park. CCTV sewer, contractor is about 40% complete with their cleaning and CCTV inspection. So far, the data that we've received looks good. They're waiting on a right-of-way permit to complete the rest of the work. CCTV storm, contractor is scheduled to mobilize on Monday. I believe they're going to start in villages at Stony Brook, and that's on Monday. Pelican Lakes 47 and 48, we completed a walkthrough. Brad has a punch list, and he is planning on installing laterals, I think, within the next seven days. Development updates, Arborwood still has a punch list for stormwater. Based on recent communications, it looks like they're getting to the end of that. Daniel's Parkway Apartments, we are just on hold right now, waiting on information from the developer. Santa Lou's, I don't have any updates on that. I think Chelsea is working on that in the background. Garrett FM, we were able to flush the potable line, and we're waiting on scheduling a pressure test for the potable water line, which should happen probably next week or the week after. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any update from you or Tony on Santa Lou's, I'll ask again.
I had a conversation this week with the attorney for the association, Rob Cooper. I had a good conversation with him. And part of our communications that we staff have had with the Lennar Group was that the 558 defect action, that apparently a claim was made against Lennar US Home, it was asserted that the lake bank issue was part of that claim. In my conversation with counsel for the association, he says that's not the case. He was going to double check though, and so he was going to dig it up and see if he can align it. I think it was a supplemental report, but, so that would clarify that and help sort of pin down that particular aspect, because part of the conversation was to Lennar US Home was, let's carve out, if in fact that lake bank issue, or the pipes, this part of these 558, let's carve that out from the balance of the 558, you know, construction defects, buildings, et cetera. And so, again, that was positive, it was good talking with Mr. Cooper, that's their attorney. And he was going to check with his client and also provide other documents. I gave him some documents we had that I wasn't sure he had. And so we talked to Chelsea, talked to Chelsea about the approach of sending, once we get more photographs of the current condition, and sending an update and with costs, send that to Lennar and give them a timeframe which to respond.
The president of the association, I talked to him, this was a month and a half ago, and he said that was not a part of that 558.
That's what Mr. Cooper said.
Yeah.
So since the last meeting, I reached out to their president, it's a woman, for Arborwood, Phase 3 Suzanne Sprenn.
Sprenn.
Sprenn. That prompted the Tony's conversation. I have reached out to Pond Bank vendors to solicit a proposal restoring it to the permitted conditions that it's supposed to be at. Those proposals are due back Friday, if not Monday. And so as soon as I have those, I'll give those to Tony, so we have costs associated to make necessary repairs.
And demand, and put dollars for your...
So in other words, we're going to go ahead and take over and do it, and then bill them?
That's not the game plan right now, is to, you know, say, hey, here, here's some quality, there's some vendors to do the work, you need to do the work.
Which is to prompt them a little bit?
Bit more. And the difficulty is now we're in the rainy season, we talked about that too, the difficulty of...
Well, it's getting worse by day, and every time we get a significant rain with runoff, it just gets that much worse.
And Tetra Tech does inspect it monthly, and we do get written reports, pictures from them, so we are monitoring that each month.
Well, do we have a cost in mind, or what it would take to fix it?
I'm waiting.
Is that we can just escrow that amount if it gets past rainy season? Do it next year, just send it in escrow? Why, I don't even suggest that to the people over there, they're so mad already. What is it, about 700, 800 feet?
I, I don't know.
Ballpark, 700, 800 feet?
$200 a foot.
Yeah.
But I guess the, because it includes the crushed pipe plus the lake bank restoration, so.
Yeah, it's a little bit of, some collateral damage.
Yeah, and that's what Chelsea indicates she hopefully will have by Friday, if not Monday.
Yeah, so I'll have a number to that by Monday.
Well, I mean, worst case scenario, for escrow.
Well, we don't have an active bond on file that we can hold.
No, it's part of the, it's part of this agreement, just put it in there as an escrow now.
Well, I don't want an agreement, because Lennar US Home has not been very, a medical agreement, somebody put it that way. We're pushing more than them, Joe. Lennar US Home is not pushing, in my opinion. We've been pushing, trying to push that, and they've been quiet or not responsive.
We're hoping that with our communications with the HOA, that we're pushing on both fronts, we'll get some action. But I don't anticipate Lennar wanting to do anything to the Pond Banks, it's rainy season, and they don't want to pay for things twice, so, but we're putting pressure.
And one other aspect, we're trying to identify who the vendor was, or party was that engaged in the activities that crushed the pipe.
I'm going to guess what it was, was the guy that came in and delivered the sod at the very end of the project. I mean, when you put that pipe, and it's got about an eight, 10 inch berry depth, and you run those heavy trucks over it.
With the sod.
Yeah, with that collapsible pipe, it's going to crush it. Wouldn't, it wouldn't thaw out at all, so. Anybody else have anything for Stephen?
And I did receive an updated timeline from OAK regarding the building ends. We're still online, we're still shooting for April, so you're going to see a lot of movement here in the next coming weeks.
Are they putting the filter back on the fence all the way around, or, because it looks like they only ran about halfway down and quit?
I believe so, but I can confirm.
Look, Stephen, you can drive by and can't see, and then the other part of the fence is wide open, like, we want you to see this part, we don't want you to see that.
Stephen, you didn't mention the pond and baldering, we put in the 22,000, we've almost finished 22,000 laterals in there this week, really extreme.
Oh, he did finish it, yeah, I did cover that, but I didn't know he had installed them yet. I heard he was going to, that's good news.
Yep.
You were talking about 36?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's 36, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, what about, um...
Today.
They've been out there the last few days, and they are dense.
They are, it's nice.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, there's a lot of those little stakes.
The blended laterals?
Yeah. Blended.
They're different kinds.
They're not very big, but I mean, they'll take, take all of them.
Anything else for Stephen? Thank you, Stephen.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Stephen.
Can we jump back to six A?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So Julie, who is here in our audience, tomorrow is her last day at the district. She has served the district 11 years.
She's retiring just shy of her 11 years, it would be one day. That would be 11 years.
So if you don't mind, we could stand up here and hold the sign and give her flowers and wish her, her, I'm jealous, retirement, wish her well in her retirement and sleeping in, because we know that's what Julie loves to do.
She's not a morning person.
So please congratulate her on her retirement.
You went for the picture?
Yes.
All the way?
That's good, that's good. All right, you want to hold your sign, and then? Let's all get together, squeeze in.
It goes with your shirt.
Say retirement.
Sleeping in.
Yeah. All right, we're going to miss you, Julie.
Yeah, thank you, Julie.
See you in the hood.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
That's why I hate you.
Sorry, my hands are totally...
Thanks for coming over.
See you in the morning.
Cry in that one.
There is no crying.
I mean, you really must, as y'all, we'll be here. 3 o'clock, you don't have to drive very far.
No. All right, thank you, everybody.
See you in the morning.
All right, and then one, one other thing.
For waiting.
Yeah. You know that, he said that we knew that would be important to you.
For waiting.
No.
I do want to mention one other thing under local achievements and recognitions. We typically do, do our employee recognitions of their tenure at the end of the fiscal year. I feel like this is very important, that we need to at least vocalize that today. But tomorrow will be Mary's 20th anniversary with the district.
Really?
Yeah.
20 years, our longest tenured employee, so that is something huge to celebrate, but we will, we will do that towards the end of the year, but I did want to bring it up in today's meeting, because that is a huge accomplishment.
And she knows every buried meter in the...
Yeah, she does, but she does, so.
20 years.
20 years.
Yeah, 20 years tomorrow. The district is what, 39 years old?
Uh huh, yeah, so she's been here very much the whole time, so. That is, again, she's been a staple of this community, and Ed hit the nail on the head. If you need to find a meter, she's going to tell you exactly where it's at.
It's invaluable.
All right, so we're 11A?
Uh huh.
Well, we used to have an employee, but the information, of course, we didn't have very good ASBILs, but when Terry left, but we had somebody, Terry, I mean, you lost a lot of knowledge, and with her, I hope she's around someplace that we can always find her too.
Oh, yeah. All right. Ready moving to 11A? All right, so Doug Xanner is here on behalf of the Pond Subcommittee. Jim Latham had a prior engagement, so this RFP went through and was solicited. The Pond Subcommittee nominated Jim, and then they have one of their volunteer groups, and then Stephanie, they were part of the selection committee. We had an astounding nine bidders.
We had nine bidders.
Nine bidders.
We had four members of the group, but we had Harold and Al Slicker.
Yes. So we had nine bids for this. This, I believe this is the first time it's been formally bid like this.
Yes.
And so the selection committee, which was supported by the Pond Subcommittee and CPAC, is recommending Superior Waterway Services. We do have a representative from Superior Waterways here. Staff's recommendation is to support your, your subcommittees and your selection committee, so we're just looking for your approval of the RFP.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the CPAC and the Pond Group.
I'll second your motion. On approval, on favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, congratulations, good work.
I just want to ensure Doug is not in online, right?
He is not, he won't be joining. That was a good one.
I didn't give him the house keys, you can take it next month.
Tim for timing.
All right, 11B.
All right, so per statute, Tony, I don't know if you want to give the spiel about auditor selection, this...
Yeah, the statute requires that the board implicitly solicit proposals for the annual audit, and it establishes a process for an auditor, selection committee, and also criteria. Staff will prepare the criteria, put it out on the street, and obtain how many proposals, Chelsea?
Two.
Two proposals, and they distributed to the board, the proposals to the board, but now we need to convene, I think Randy had prepared sort of a script for that.
Yes.
To sit as the audit selection committee. So the boards are basically, will basically briefly recess as the board and convene as the auditor selection committee. So I think it would be appropriate for the chair, a kind of motion, for the board to briefly recess as the board supervisors and to convene as the auditor selection committee.
I'll make a motion.
Second. On favor say aye?
Aye.
What a total waste. So in your capacity as auditor selection committee, y'all have an opportunity to review the proposals, and you can rank them based upon the criteria outlined in there. I don't know if staff has any recommendations, or...
We're not allowed to.
I know. The proposals were riveted.
Glad you thought of something.
They were what?
Riveted, couldn't put them down.
Something like that.
So you have...
I have a script.
You have all the rankings and the...
Yes, those provided.
This was based on that system?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to take it back, but I'll bring it back.
So the total points were combined from all of your individual rankings. Citron Cooperman would be the highest ranked firm. So we're looking for the selection committee's recommendation on how to proceed.
I guess so.
I recommend that we accept Citron.
Do I have to?
It would be the action of the auditor selection committee recommends to the board supervisors that they award the audit engagement to Citron Cooperman. That's what I meant to say.
There's like a whole script here.
That's all right.
So we're not going to do it, because Tony's bound to fit down a rope.
Yeah.
The only thing that I've got on this, for what it's worth, is that I talked to Russ Wire, and he, he couldn't get over how good Grau and Associates are, and the background that they have with CDDs. That, that is basically their bread and butter. He never heard of Citron.
I will say, I was just...
That concerned me greatly.
The last two, not that I can chime into your selection committee, but the last two days, I was at the FASTE conference up in, in Punta Wurina, and Grau and Associates was a sponsor of the FASTE conference.
Citron, in my, my background, I did not find much to give me feeling that they are in the CDD in their bailiwick. That concerns me greatly.
But we never get the reports in time, do we?
The thing is, on the point system, it's bad, is, is that the preference, or a plethora of the points was for the dollar value. And that could have swayed it right there, and when I'm doing professionals, I don't look at the dollar value until the very end. And I just, I think we're making a mistake when we go with Citron.
I'm all about saving the money. What's the risk, Ed? What risk is it?
I want somebody that knows CDDs and knows our business.
Well, I mean, that's their only business, is ours.
Yeah, there's, just like municipalities, and like HOAs, and like the other ones, there are differences. There are differences.
Then you need to sharpen your pencil next time we bid it.
So you, am I looking for a motion?
So...
There was a motion. I think Bob made the motion, but with the selection committee.
Yes.
Okay. So Bob had made a motion to go ahead and move with Citron, ready?
Yes, to recommend to the board supervisors to engage Citron, yes.
Is that what I was saying? So I'm looking for a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, I'll call it for a vote, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so if you can convene as the selection committee and...
Recess as the selection committee.
Recess?
As the selection committee.
I move to recess the selection.
They've been, they've been in the role of the selection committee. Now we're in the mood.
All right.
Now I recommend we...
We have recessed, and now we're... I move to recess the selection committee.
Second.
On favor?
And now I'll make a motion that we accept the selection committee's recommendation. You need to reconvene with the board.
No, first I have to the meeting first.
The board. Or should we reconvene with the board supervisors?
Okay, I'll second that motion, on favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, go ahead.
Now I recommend we accept the recommendation of the selection committee to go with Citron.
I'll second. On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
That was as much as reading those documents.
So that was items B and C.
Right.
All right, and now we're on to item D, the budget. Is there any, where you want to start with this? So I will give a brief update. Stephen Bloom is working on the capital financing for the projects that we deferred, as well as the, some of the Parks and Rec ones that, the larger ticket items that are in the current proposed budget. And then we did reach out to Rhonda Mossing, who assisted last time with the financing for the Bond series. And so she said if that's the path you wish to pursue, she is available in... And so she said if that's the path you wish to pursue, she's available and ready. But waiting on Stephen Blum to follow back up with the pricing from banks.
I would like to allow P-PAC to have their April, or I'm sorry, July and August meetings and make recommendations to the board as far as the full-toe account.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, I don't think there's anything
This is just, I wouldn't agree.
We're passing a lot more. We're now talking about ways to...
This is the first way we do this.
To reduce, yes. And one of the things we were talking, we were, a couple of things that we left staff to do was to make a couple of checks on things. And I don't know, did you get that done or are we...
We're waiting.
Okay.
How about the $40,000 for the calendars?
We did reach out to the sheriff's office. I'm waiting to hear back from them. I sent that email out, I think, last Friday. So I am waiting to hear back. I didn't ask that they have somebody come and attend, preferably the lieutenant? Was it the lieutenant? No.
Lieutenant.
Or captain.
I just want to know what I'm getting for my money. That's a lot of money.
Understood. And I did echo those sentiments to those folks when I sent that email, so I'm waiting to hear back on that. So is there any specific areas that you want to discuss or...
So we'll just go, do you have a few, because I have one. So then maybe, Carol, you want to start with the ones you have and we'll just go do it? You don't have any?
I want you to know the other answer.
I had that and then I had the ticket with the canvas. What you talked about.
No, the ones I've got are primarily focused with P-PAC.
Okay. Okay, so then you are, that was easy.
I do have one question.
Yep. See, you said it was easy.
It was about the budget itself. It's about the numbers that are in the budget. I pointed out almost about a year ago that the number of ERUs, the count, was in error. Was that ever corrected?
It is not an error. We did validate this year. You're talking about the one where you had like seven more properties or whatever that showed.
About 50.
We did, we validated those. They came up, there was a discrepancy of seven initially. Russ went back and verified with Leepa that those were homes that had multiple lots and they were counted as one for tax purposes. So if you looked, it looked like two if you looked, but on Leepa there were ones. That was the discrepancies that we found. So we did reconcile those.
Mine was a little bit different. We had the listing of all of the ones in Gateway and it showed Fairway Isles. Fairway Isles is Fairway Isles North and Fairway Isles South. It's a total of like 33 and 54, something like that, about 80 some. It only counted one of them. And they weren't showing anyplace else. And none of them are double lots.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that the counting we've got is correct because not only am I worried about that, I'm worried about are they getting built? Do we know that every one of those tracks in those two are being built?
The total properties that came in the information, the tax information from Lee County equals the total of ERUs that we have in our budget.
We'll double check. We'll double check.
It's undeveloped right now, Ed?
I'm sorry?
It's undeveloped?
It's totally developed.
Totally?
What I'm saying is that when we had the total listing of all the ones in Gateway, which was Pine Crest, Pinewood Lakes, Gateway Greens, well, the Gateway Greens is broken up into all the 21 sections. When I went through each one of those to compare, because what I was looking for was my, I've got an issue with Comcast. And I know exactly definitively, I've got 1,418 units. When I counted this up, I got around 1,350.
We'll double check.
Yep, we requested two separate times this year of the tax thing from Lee County. So it was the one where we initially started the budget process and we requested it again a week, well, we got it a week before we prepared this high watermark budget. And then nothing had changed between the two of them.
There was a form that we had that was in, when we were doing all the budget work, that had a listing of all of it.
I have that. You can step by and you can...
Let me have that and I'll check. It'll take 10 minutes and we'll know whether it's correct. But that's a significant number. If it's, everybody's here to build, that's great. I just want to make sure that we don't have 50, 60 people that are not on the rolls.
Double check. We'll get to that. All right, anything else for the budget? Moving on, monthly reports. I do want to, before we jump into monthly reports, I did just come back from the FASD training and I am 99% sure, 100% sure that you have to do that ethics, that four-hour ethics training every single year.
I looked it up.
So I will be following up with what is required and send you guys emails on what, I'll do like I did last time, I'll go through FASD, I'll pay it, and then I'll send you guys the links and then you can go on your own accord and do it. But if you have any questions, let me know.
Does it have to be done by the year? It's number 31, it says. And we have the financial disclosure due by July 1st?
Yes.
I finally was... You finally got in after what, 30th of your office? Yeah.
Did you get it in?
Yeah, because we were trying to... Because she couldn't get logged in, she'd reset. I just brought my laptop in office. I gave it to Lauren, I said, here, usually.
It's all those international holding.
I see now.
All right, so make sure you get your Form 1s done as well. All right, moving on to monthly reports. Anything for administration?
I don't have anything, no.
Okay.
You want to subsect, you want us to have something? Okay.
All right, nothing for administration?
Is it the amount of emails that you receive and...
No, we're good. All right, moving on to public works. Anything for Paul?
I do want to check in, not with the reports, but just checking in with you.
Absolutely. Good afternoon.
Hi.
He's still here.
Yeah.
About to break a record.
Didn't mean over a year. Now, so Paul, how's everything? How are we treating you?
Really, everything's been really good. It's been, like, I think it was mentioned the last of a board meeting, it was dripping out of a fire hydrant, but now it's more like a water hose.
Okay.
It's starting to get a little more familiar and it's much easier for me to try to get a handle of what's going on.
Make sure to bring yourselves. I have questions. The, we talked last meeting, the manhole in Hidden Lakes.
Yes.
We still waiting on material or where are we at on that?
No, that was done.
It's done?
Yes.
So which, are you talking stormwater or are you talking manhole?
Storm sewer manhole inlet on the backside of the wall that is about 18 inches.
Met Tower confirmed that they completed the work.
Never heard about.
Okay. Well, if you want to go take a look at it and tell me if it's not to your satisfaction, let us know.
I would have brought it up today at the HRAV.
Okay. I'd be one that happy to meet you there as well, so.
That's all I got.
Anything else?
I have one other thing to add under public works. Met Tower did complete the damages that were done to that flowway where the gentleman went off-roading. They repaired those damages yesterday, I think it was, right?
Yes.
Did they really do the fabric, the fabric thing?
Yeah. So that, those repairs were complete.
What was the total?
About like $15,000.
Well, we said 16, so it's pretty close.
Yeah, pretty close, what we guessed.
Okay, have you heard from the parents?
I have not.
Okay, so we stand on discussing charges and...
Well, the sheriff, it's in the sheriff's hands and we wait for them to let us know. Anything else for Paul? He's got a snorkel, you guys don't see it, he's, you know.
Nothing else for Paul, because he wouldn't know this one. But we all sat with the sewer lid on Pine Wood, remember that gentleman?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back from that gentleman.
Did we do our part?
Yeah, we did our part.
That was a few months ago.
You told about Pine Wood or Pine Crest?
Pine Wood.
Pine, no, Pine Crest, you're right, Pine Crest, yeah.
Haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything either.
I think he was a snowbird anyway, so he might be gone for the summer. But we did, we fetched that.
Yeah, it's been there for a few months.
Nothing else for Pauls?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. All right. Mr. Shaw, who goes for all the utilities? Anything for him?
Sanitary sewer manhole and Callaway Greens.
Found them both.
You found them?
Yep.
Both?
Yep.
Are there two?
There's two.
Didn't know it, didn't you?
Sounds like the drawings are wrong.
You were missing two.
Why is the one coming out of Cypress Lakes coming south on Championship? On the drawings I've got shows it goes in the road, into the road, and into the pump station. It looks like it deviates and goes onto the golf course. It does. And then does it beeline straight over to the manhole in front of the...
There's a, there's a second manhole in the grass. It shows that on our, our plans show it in the road, but we found it in the grass.
Well, there's one wide open up on the golf course.
Yeah, there's another one.
Is there another one?
There's another one in the grass.
So that's the one that brings those two together and goes into the station?
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, so...
What's the plan on, because we're going to be doing cleaning up there, we got to get those opened up?
Yeah, so supposedly it had been done and I questioned it. And they went back and reviewed and realized that they had shot from the wrong manhole. So they're supposed to coordinate with me when they get back about finding that. At that time, we will come and expose that manhole. I didn't want to dig a hole there in the grass, it's about eight inches deep. I am working on...
That's on the golf course?
On the golf course. I'm working on curing some composite lockable ceiling lids so that we can go ahead and replace those.
What about the one in front of the median, yeah, Callaway Greens? Is that, that's in the block top?
No, it's in the median.
So it's up in the grass?
It's up in, it's up in the median, in the, in the plants as well. The staff has kind of uncovered that and feathered it back, so it's easier for us to find. But that is not on our CCTV list for this round, so. But the, but the one that's in the grass by the master manhole is absolutely on our list for...
So what do we do? We're only coming down to that point and not going any further south?
Yeah, it, it goes from the, from the master manhole, I believe it goes a manhole each direction.
Correct.
Is what the plan of action was.
We'll work the test track on next phase, but right now your vendor's waiting on a right-of-way permit?
We're waiting on right-of-way permits. We just got an email earlier today that Lee County said that they will have it reviewed sometime next week.
I don't know if anybody has ever been in, or the light of day has ever seen the bottom of those two manholes. I think they've been buried for 40 years.
Yeah, so they were, they were a challenge to find and staff did a great job on finding them. I spent a little bit of time and didn't find them quickly and I passed it off and they did a great job of finding them, so.
Anything else for Bill?
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you. Liked all 30 pictures. Liked all 30 pictures from Paul.
Oh, yeah. Pictures are always...
Oh, did it?
Yeah.
Okay, following the staff's discussion, direction, and requesting, I guess, greater participation and also having some interns or community volunteers work for the staff to upgrade the volunteer waivers, so I think we're about 99% there. As you noticed in the agenda package, there's two resolutions. That is part of the notices for the budget adoption as well as reviewing the one. There's another one that's going to be newspaper also, it has the charts and the maps. And Georgia did the initial draft and reviewed that. District management engagement letter that's been completed. If I can just get a signed copy of it when you have the chance.
Yes, I'll go sign it.
To remove the, remove those caps that were in there, provide greater flexibility to the board in the future. Assessment methodology, review revisions, again, those are the agenda items, you saw those resolutions today. The Jopie Master Agreement for IT Services was approved today, yes.
High.
That was...
Fun.
There was a situation with the IT vendor that said they did not have a contract format. They came up with a contract format that was horrible. It's taken what, almost a year?
Yeah.
Worked with them to finalize it because of certain issues about liability and indemnification was the, the holdup.
Do they work in municipal government at all?
Apparently not.
That would be my guess.
I've run into that with a lot of vendors that don't work with local governments and they'll give you a contract that has all these non-cancelable, non-termination clauses, all these, and it's just, and it's an education. I had another client who wanted to engage a roofer, and the roofer had never had a contract with a governmental body before, and they had all kinds of interesting provisions, to put it that way. The irrigation meter is Stony Brook Village, we finally had that, we appreciate the cooperation from U.S. Homes. That was an irrigation meter that should have been conveyed many, many years ago. And so U.S. Homes executed a quick clean of the sale, just to clean it up so that, Chelsea mentioned before, I think you're starting Stony Brook Village soon or you have the meters?
No, they're done.
They're done, so that was just in time.
Yep.
The Stony Brook Roads and Streets, we had a good conference call this week with the council for all the parties. I appreciate the fact that even though Charles Mann was unavailable, vacation, personal time off, one of the other partners, Sinead Thompson, joined the call and apparently she had held communications with in-house counsel for U.S. Home. And they, she had two questions with regards to the form of the agreement. And we addressed those and made one revision to the agreement and sent it out for circulation. And the Stony Brook Council replied that they're comfortable with that and just waiting for counsel for Lennar. So I think we're much closer than we were before, I feel very comfortable about that. It's a matter of finalizing the document, putting all these bits together, one big nice package, and getting it all executed in a timely manner to wrap it up well in advance of the...
And I have to echo Tom's comments earlier, they have been, the HOA has been great to work with, processing some of items to spend down this money, so.
And so, Tommy, when might this actually happen, happen?
I'm waiting for the counsel for Lennar and U.S. Home to get back to me and then I can have a better handle of it, because then it's just a matter of making sure we...
Are we talking July?
Oh, no, we're talking July.
July.
Yeah, July, yes.
Well, you, at the end of our call, we set up, we set a deadline of ourselves for two weeks from, what was that, Wednesday or Tuesday? So two weeks, that's the goal.
So just like that.
Could be the end of this month.
That'd be a big, beautiful bill.
Well, we're not giving, we're not giving any acronyms. I can come up with one easily enough, I'm not going to do it. Santa Luz already reported on that again. I think it's a good collaborative effort with the association now that we have communications with their council also. Just a matter of, it's just very frustrating for all of us, quite frankly.[1559.34] Talk, let's see, if I hold, the rest of them are, oh, Daniels Parkway Apartments, the utility items. Had a conversation with the attorney for in-house counsel Lance for the Daniels Parkway developers with regards to the two agreements, the upsizing agreement and the well agreement. And the upsizing agreement, I think we're probably 99% there in the language of the agreement. There's just some clarification needed because one of their insurance was de-verified because of the aggressive job site and construction activities going on from enforcement, from immigration purposes. We talked through that and then the well agreement, I'm waiting for comments back on that and I need to talk to Chelsea about just clarifying one aspect of it. So we could hopefully have that by July 17th board meeting, like to have that wrapped up and approve by the board. Kelly's Office Park are prepared to revise, quickly de, for that, to provide the, I'll call, duty to defend on behalf of the district if Mr. Sarver were to, ever be sued, so I'm not sure if I want, I can send that to you first and then see what you can get from it.
Right.
Okay, well, and maybe just see what else. Any questions the board has for anything else?
No, one thing I would just comment on, the things that are on hold, if this can be broken down into two sections, the active, that's what I, okay, see here, and then if it gets on hold, if it becomes active, then move it up.
Very good, Young Green's audience around, per your suggestion last time, but I don't do that anymore. Yes, sir.
And have we had any more correspondence with the attorney, I think her name is Jennifer or something?
Have not.
From PPCA?
Have not.
Have not.
But apparently another district settled a lawsuit per court filing, but I don't know what.
Say it again, Tony.
Apparently that other district settled their lawsuit per court filing.
Those, the Renaissance?
Yeah. But I've heard nothing for this.
And the ball is in the, that court?
I'd say yes.
It is not in your court?
I'd say no, not in mine, guessing theirs.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tony? I just wanted to bring the next item, if you're ready for it.
Yeah, I'm ready.
The meeting schedule, if you guys have any, you have technically a meeting schedule for 1-1. I didn't know if you wanted the workshop and a regular meeting and then, just trying to look at any other holidays that I see.
That was the only one.
I think those were, that may be the only one, so if you want to adjust those since that's a holiday for us.
7-2 is probably another one, like we have now, getting real close to the fourth.
So if you'd like.
7-2 and 1-1, 1-1, that's not a good day.
So I.
I'll move to cancel the January 1st, 2026 and the July 2nd, 2026 meetings.
I'll second that motion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we will get this updated and then we will get this advertised, come closer to the end of fiscal. All right, the next is Attorney Management. You'll notice this list is getting smaller because we're ramping up a lot of projects and you'll see it start to grow closer to the new fiscal. Any questions?
Have we heard anything relative to power and power availability to provide for the aerators that we have yet to install?
We have not started that project yet, the trunk line ponds is what you're talking about? We have not started that project yet, we're trying to get all of these off of our plate before we take on a new one. As soon as we start that, FPL is our first contact to find out where the closest power sources are, but we have not started.
Why are we only doing trunk line, why not like do them all?
We started.
The, the board directed us to do trunk line, focus on trunk line.
Well, it's going to be a lot of money, no matter what, but I mean, continuing the peace deal while we know it benefits, well, why don't we just bite the bullet?
We only, so we only have so much funding left within the 20.3 bond series and so the direction, the last direction that staff was given was the trunk line ponds.
How many ponds are in that versus our total bonds versus the ones that are already done? We have 118 ponds.
Probably got 15, ballpark?
15 done?
No, 15, no, we don't have any done.
No, we have some done.
No, we have middle.
Middle.
Maybe 15, 15 in the trunk, in the flow, what I call the flowway.
Okay.
15 ponds make up the flowway, all the way from Daniels Preserve all the way to.
And quite honest, that would be the last thing I would do, from an aeration point of view. The ponds would be better served by having it, because the flowway was leaving us.
And that's the key, that's where the water is dumped in, that's why you want to make sure it's high-quality water.
No, I'm not looking at that quality of water, I'm looking at the beneficial effects on the ponds.
Well, it's both, but the, the, the way you always do it is you go from the bottom to the top, you don't go from the top to the bottom. You take that, you're going to be taking and having the, what, clean water going right into the dirty water. That makes, makes no sense, you don't want to do it that way, you want to go the other way.
I completely disagree with that, maybe we're not.
Engineering wise, I think it'll be the other.
Okay, I'm not an engineer, I just don't, but if I clean my ponds aerated and clean, I won't have fish kill. And you'll have, you can forestall dredging and things like that, I don't.
Well, see, that's an issue that we haven't even discussed yet.
Well, that's part of the reason why.
Until we do those.
Got the metrics.
About the metrics, we aren't going to know just how bad those ponds are, nobody knows.
That's exactly my point, we need to get a baseline, we need to know what we've got, but if you take care of the constituent ponds that are not part of the flowway. And then the flowway would be the last thing we would do, because you're not doing this to improve that water quality per se, you are putting oxygen in the water and you are forestalling future dredging. But you want to have the satellites done first.
Well, we continue to disagree on that, I think it's just.
Well, I mean, we need to have, maybe we'll have a workshop on this, so we can all understand it and what we're doing. I mean, to put an aerator in a flowway is, like, the board knows why.
The, the flowway is a pond. All of our ponds, just happens to be that several of our ponds, about 15 of them in a row, make up what is the flowway, the ponds feed ponds, feed ponds, feed ponds and feed the flowway. Then the issue is, is that when we have the water quality, the last thing we want to do is to dump dirty water into the clean water of the flowway that we're going to discharge out. When somebody comes in and starts filling checks here, the first place they're going to go to is down to Basin 1. And that's where all of our stuff correct ends up. I want to have the cleanest water possible going down that flowway, going into that deal.
I want the cleanest water possible in the ponds that contribute to it, then you can't have a problem with that.
If it doesn't show up, it'll yell, it'll get diluted, that's your problem, you don't want to do it that way.
We, I, Rick and Randy, we have a workshop.
The issue is, well, by all the reason I brought it up, is I just want to find out, what is it going to cost just to, because we all know that that's where the money's at.
The money's in the.
The money is in the electrical, is, we've got to find out how we can do it. Alls I know is that within Gateway Greens, we had had several projects recently to where we have had to have electricity. And FPL could not even handle that minor amount of electricity off of the transformer.
I don't know what they're doing with all the electric cars and things, but that's a different again, but if your, your goal is to have clean water and prevent fish kills. And I'm not talking about clean water out of Basin 1, if it's clean going in, it'll be clean going out, because you want to clean up your ponds that are providing the water to them. But again, we're going to agree to disagree until we get the experts in, that's what Sole Pelican will do.
We need to get in and get this process started because we've, we've kicked this down a long way. But I just don't want to take and jump into it knowing, not knowing what's ahead of us relative to the, the electrical side.
I don't want to see the whole block, I don't want to see a piece of it, I want to see the whole block.
Well, I think we need to see the whole picture of everything we've got in the community. Because every one of our communities are all the same, FPL's got a transformer that serves every four to six to eight houses, that's it. And they do not upsize them.
I'll make a suggestion, because I know Pelican Works and Austin and TechRat, we're working on getting all of our GIS updated with all of this information. I know Ed's working on the Pelican side. So once we get that picture, that big picture to paint, we can bring it back in front of you, in front of you as a workshop on the Gateway side, I think you guys have handled all of it.
We're done, I mean.
Your aerators, but then we can have a lively discussion with exhibits in front of us and you tell us the direction you'd like us to.
This is going to be a big chunk of money, we don't plan for it.
When, when might that be?
Their priority right now is, is the waterway stuff, so I would say in the next six months.
Did you guys ever do?
Okay, so early next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you guys ever do an analysis of what your cost per acre was?
All in? No.
Because I'd heard numbers of 5,000 per acre.
We spent probably over a million dollars.
Okay.
In doing our 58 ponds.
I don't know.
But it got a lot cheaper for.
How many acres do we have in our 70 ponds, you know?
But Ed, one of the keys to our success was because we got it in early. The only thing we really had to provide electric to was the original old Pelican. When it came time for new Pelican, this board changed at our director's request, changed the criteria manual. So then the developer had to put electric at all of our ponds.
Well, the other thing too is that you didn't.
I'm sorry?
And it still costs a million, just for the old Pelican?
Well, pretty much for old Pelican.
The other thing too, that you had, didn't have, that we, you didn't have, that we have, is a mathometric problem. You had relatively new ponds, our ponds are four years old and we have no idea what we're going to get into relative to having two.
We don't have a lot of robust data, because we didn't pay for real down.
I'm, I'm really worried as to what the capacity of our ponds is versus what they were built to be.
Well, the rule of thumb, the rule of thumb that we were directed by the council was you got about a 40, maybe 45-year lifespan. However, if you put an aeration, that jumps to 65 to 80-year lifespan.
And our problem is, is if you put an aeration on a 40-year-old pond, what are you going to stir up? That's.
Do you have fish kills, do we have fish kills over here?
We had one in one time at Gateway Greens.
Because that was one of our big drivers.
That's the only, and we had one in Magnolia Lakes and I think it was 2011.
When the fish killed, it's a guy killed the whole community. 1-116, well, about four years ago, the good news of it was the collateral damage, we got rid of all the platelets, we got rid of all the, but.
I couldn't get around any fish for in those stupid ponds, thousands of fish, and they washed up on the shore. That was amazing, it's a thing.
Anyway, we need to get some idea of the handle on what this is going to cost.
At least make a plan, make a plan and know what's going to cost, I agree with that.
All right, so we'll have it as a workshop with some exhibits and some information moving forward.
Early next year.
Yes.
January 1st.
I'll just cancel.
Anything else?
I'll be home, have fun.
Nothing, Attorney Management.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add?
Attorney Agenda Management?
Yeah. All right, let's move on. We supervisor, future business, yeah, 11, 14A.
Okay.
And we did that?
We did that.
We did that already, yes, we're at 15. Well, do you have anything?
I have two things. First is what is the status of digitizing Pepperdine's closet with all the.
I love your name, your, your, your name of it, great. The hot box is what we call it.
Yeah, the hot.
They just came, I think last week or the week before, to get a stack of them, so we're slowly sending them off.
So it's on process?
Yes.
Okay, I never hear about it, no?
Yeah, and then we're trying to clear out any of the cabinets that are in here, so you may see, what are they called, the?
Shredder.
Shredder, geez Louise.
They're going to, well, yeah, they may be shredder, otherwise the stuff that I had scanned from upstairs, I told them just to destroy it, they don't need it back.
All blue, we have aisle cabinets, not plans, not plans, not drawings, but those boxes of files, what are we going to do with all that?
Well, we're going to organize that up there and get the banker's box stacked cabinets, you can get on Amazon, we did it when I was at the beach. And we're going to get it organized and get it properly labeled and, and organize it up there, we're not taking it to the building.
Good. Fire hazard looking.
Ballbox, what percent have we accomplished, 10%, 20%, 30%?
Five, probably 5%. But we're, we're, I mean, we're, we're trying, so.
There's a lot, it's a lot to go through and they did not do a very good job of organizing it, so it's really difficult, you have, you have a banker's box.
It's a mess.
With items in it that can be disposed of after three years, with items that need to be kept for 25 and some have to be 10 and they're all in the same box. So we actually, it's not like I can just take a box and say here, we have to go through everything and separate it and figure it out, so it's.
Who has the knowledge to do that?
That's my.
Let's go say that, one of the staff is going to go out there and do that.
Well, we have, we have a retention schedule that's dictated by the state and that's what we follow, if we have any questions, we always reach out to Tony.
Tony wants us to keep everything forever.
In fact, in fact, there's two, two retention schedules, that's the beauty, one's for general records, one's for utilities, in all the states.
And unemployment are different and, yeah.
Okay, well, I was the person.
5%.
Maybe 10.
I was hoping we were a person. The second question is, we were going to investigate, you were going to investigate alternative timekeeping measurement systems, have we done anything on that?
Yeah.
Yes, Laura, I told you he wasn't going to say that.
I did.
We bet a dollar earlier, I lost, I thought I would, but you just proved me wrong.
Yep, I was going to have to give her a dollar, so thank you.
So I, we did look into it, it's about $20 per person per month for average cost of, for timekeeping. So if the board wants to extend those dollars, we'll dig a little deeper.
And we're talking about 11 people?
No, we're talking about 36 people.
No, I, I don't have any interest in utilities people. That's in the, all I have is in what components we're sharing, it's not a lot of people, $5.
Everyone bought utilities, so half the stacks, so 17, roughly 18.
Yeah, half, so it's approximately $20 per person per month.
So 11 times 20.
It's more than.
Well, it's more than 11, you're paying for half the staff now.
Hey buddy, we're paying for a woman.
Out of general, so let's just, let's split the baby, let's just say 15, right?
Okay.
Times $20 per person.
And when I look at today's sheets again, it's just stark to me how few projects relate to Pelican and how many relate to other things. And I just, I really don't have a gut feeling that it's being equitable, not everybody, not everything, but in total. And I would really like to get a company feeling, so even if we did a trial of doing this system for a set number of months, I would support that and then I'll shut up about it. If we, you know, whatever the data says, I've always said I'll accept the data, whether it increases our cost or reduces it. But I'd like to have confidence that it's more than, Julie, how many hours you work, ah, 30, I'll tell you that, 20.
Well, and I, and I don't intend for this to be argumentative, but the system is only as good as the person putting the information into it. And so I personally don't see where we would get a different outcome, but if the board is interested in investing that type of money. We can, we can implement it for your, your period of time that you like. I, I thought us doing this Excel sheet and tracking our time was that, but it seems like you're not happy with it, so.
What's the difference?
Excel sheets, I could print the whole year today.
You know, I mean, the, the information is critical that the person entering the data enters the right code of what they're doing. Whether you have a time sheet or whether you have.
But Ed, when that phone rings, we don't ask them to do it, that's the key difference. We don't have, we go out in hindsight, what did you do last week? They're not putting it in like Tony's time, you can speak, how do you do it in your firm? When a phone rings, somebody gets billed, right? In, in a fashion?
Yeah, we, for billable work management, the time work system.
Okay, so that's all I'm looking for, this is, I'm not looking to make a mountain out of a molehill. But I don't think it's very difficult to have five columns next to it and Bob Geppard called at 8 o'clock, talked to me till 9 o'clock, that's an hour.
Plus we have increased.
What did your classroom say?
If I'm talking to Laura, it's a lot of.
It's Donald.
Don't talk about.
Slow retention.
Oh, okay.
Slow retention, senior retention. So where do we go?
So who will be paying for it? Is it a Pelican payment or is it something that we're going to be dividing it between?
We divide their salaries now, that's why.
So that's what I'm saying. Are you proposing?
Well, it's a Pelican deal, it's a Pelican expense.
That's what I was thinking, I was supportive.
Wait, that's all one district, I just want to make sure that we as a group are appropriating staff resources to divert the problem, that's all I'm going to say. And I don't have any confidence for doing that right now.
See, I would like to, I would, I'll support it both ways, I would like to see if there's any discrepancy, then I would say go ahead and do it. So far, have you encountered any discrepancies?
I can't encounter, answer your question, yes, in a gun, because when I see the same, I get reports that are, like I said, I could do it today for the whole year. That doesn't do me any good.
Have we got better at updating them or is it still?
No, it hasn't changed one bit, nothing has changed.
Because I know we did ask for that, to them not to be so generic and just a little bit more detail.
I will say, we did ask that of staff, but when you have an accounts payable person doing accounts payable eight hours a day and answering the phone eight hours a day. They're not going to keep track of the seven phone calls they got from Pelican and the 23 that they got from Gateway and the two they got from Lehigh, we, we don't track to that point, myself included. So like, I went to that conference yesterday, the past few days, I, I said, I said, how do I break this apart, you know, between Gateway, because it really, it benefits everybody. I mean, I did it by the 59, 14, 27, because that's how we measure it, but.
And to your point, two years ago, we did it 59, Pelican was paying like 7% of the total, but we had, we didn't have any problem taking it from 7 to 20. That happened in a B, and all I'm saying is, what's with the data that made that change? That's what I'm.
I, I think I'd like to sit down with you to try to under, better understand one-on-one, because if we're just, if we're tracking, if you're, if you're upset with the comments.
No, I'm not upset with the comments, I just don't have.
He cannot validate.
Nothing could roll off.
He cannot validate our, because the comments are too generic and they look month to month to be the same.
And I, and I go back.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, because we sat here as a board, I remember when Stoney Brook said, oh, you got us at 5% and it should only be 4 for this version, but we all did it, it was no, nothing scientific about it, we just did it, okay? And I never got involved in it, because whatever the number was, the number was, but when we went from every single person that was coming into the O2 account, one up by a minimum of 100%, one went up 200%. That's where the flag dropped down for me, I'd like to know why that change happened.
So I, again, I go back to my initial comment of regardless of the system you implement, I don't see that being any different than the Excel sheet that we're doing now because of the person inputting the information. Like, the person's not going to change, well, Julie's retiring tomorrow, so that person's going to change, but speaking for myself, I'm still going to be the one to put in the information and track the hours.
For you, right.
So I don't see that being a huge change from what would be six months from now.
Well, again, I don't have a system in place, all I want to do is, there's got to be a system somewhere that can do this very easily. We're not the first place, first organization that wanted to know what their employees are spending their time on.
Let me, can I ask a question, just want to ask Tom Pettoni on the spot. I think what makes this difficult is that, like, when you work on stuff, if you have billable time, you get to sit and work on one thing that's billable time for that one thing. You're not doing payables for this person while you're answering a call for this, while you're doing something else for this all at the same time. That's what makes this so difficult and that's part of why our tracking is so generic. Because I can tell you, I spent, I know, like, overall, like, I approve POs and process invoices and approve invoices all day long. I don't set aside a certain time where I just sit and do it, so it's, it's very difficult to track. Same with Julie, like Chelsea said, that's what she does all day long, she's in there, she's opening mail, she's answering phone calls, she's doing emails, she's sending out things for approvals, she's processing invoices. There is no way for us to just say, okay, I'm going to sort all this and just do Pelican, and I'm going to sort all this and just do General Pond, we don't work like that. And that, that's what makes what you're asking for challenging.
That is actually probably the most helpful explanation that I've got.
Say it again.
Your explanation of it, that's why it's so generic.
And I don't have the solution, I just, there's got to be a solution out there. I mean, if you go into a, you know, a doctor's office, they don't build everybody the very same thing. If one person's getting an MRI, whatever, then they're going to pay a certain fee, if you're just going to teleprompt or a Zoom meeting, it's a double cost.
Right, but you're able, you're able to separate that back to each task.
Well, we, we can't do that.
If you know what your task to get out of what I'm saying to you here, but I would just like to have somebody look at it and come up with a.
The only way you can do it is.
How about if you do it on your end and you come up to us, would they be willing to do that? By the way, I.
Oh, I could, I could do it today. Will, will you buy my recommendation? Because we're back to 7%.
The only way you can do it is a fancy.
That's what I mean.
But the issue in the points he's.
I hope I had a lot of notes.
Is, I'll bring up Stoney Brook, use that as a good example, uh, Daniels Preserve, if we're doing it for them, why aren't we doing it for them?
No, I'm doing it for everybody.
Doing it for everybody.
Then everybody's going to be charged something, no?
Then you're back to the deal and it's all going to merge back together anyway, so I just don't understand what we need to do.
I feel like we lose productivity because you have to lose time. I feel like we lose productivity because you have to lose time to track what you're doing during the day and because we're not able to silo our tasks the way that somebody who has billable hours can sit and silo by client or by patient or whatever. We can't work like that. It's just, it won't work in our environment. The only way that I can really silo my time is like for sitting here or sitting at PPEC meeting or if I have a specific meeting that I attend, but the rest of staff doesn't have that.
But to pull the thread on that, even sitting here.
I don't charge all my time to Pelican, it's.
Well, this is, this.
But this is really the only way I can tell you, we had a board meeting and I spent this much time at the board meeting. It's really hard to silo that.
Okay, look, think of it a different way. There's a number of volunteer organizations in Pelican. One of them focuses on ponds. Another focuses on safety and security and a third on management. Now, those are dedicated people and resources. Somebody over here is doing the same for me. When we have all these people over there doing volunteering, we should be getting a price break for that because it relieves staff over, somebody over here from doing it. But if you're telling that here, this is what I think I hear, if all of those people in Pelican all resign tomorrow and all the work team over here and you're saying there wouldn't be a change in allocation of the time of the staff, it would be exactly today what it was before, you wouldn't hear it right then. But we're providing the labor and not getting the benefit because arbitrarily, somebody said a year and a half ago, this person's now 100% increased in time, this person's 150% increased, this person's 200. I objected to that when that happened because there wasn't anything to back it up and I still feel that.
So I, I can try to respond to that. I'm not saying that if all of your subcommittees volunteer, that they resigned and didn't want to volunteer anymore, that we could absorb that. Absolutely not. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we would, that we would honestly have to reevaluate. We would have to see if there's additional capacity that staff could take on. Now, using that example, the pond RFP we just did, okay? I had, I was involved in that. Now, had Jim or Dove not been the point person.
Who would have taken on?
It would have taken additional resources on our side. So you are having a cost savings because you're only having really myself touch it or Randy touch it instead of writing the whole thing, like what, like what we do on our side. So I see a cost savings in that, but that's where I'd like to, I'd like to sit.
Okay, I'll be having to sit talk, but I, we've got 30% of the community, which is Pelican, and they're doing an awful, awful lot of work. Over here, there's 60% of the community and generally speaking, staff doesn't know. Would it not make sense if they get a 30% break if we just add a flat rate for everything and then you get a 30% break if we're doing it? I don't know how you cut the baby. Ed, I understand where you're coming from, but something just, just doesn't sit right with me about this process. That massive increase a year and a half ago wasn't any more thought out than here's, here's what we think. That still sticks in my.
Well, we'll have the full year's data at the end of the fiscal year. We'll bring that and report that to the group.
That's not gonna change. I see that every month in Pelican.
Well, the thing you're gonna run into is, I'm gonna hear.
Everything's always 40 hours. We got 40 hours.
Because that's what they've been budgeted for this year. Now, you're not gonna save 40 for me, you're, I mean, the maintenance staff, you were budgeted 40 hours, so we're trying to stay within that budget.
But next year, next year's not.
Exactly. And next year, everything is on the table. Every, so instead of, and I just had this conversation with Paul this morning, Laura heard me. What was only dedicated 40 hours, if you guys have 17 tasks that need done.
It needs to be done.
It has, it's gonna get done.
I, I.
It's not gonna be, you know.
Put my whole point in that and I agree with what you're saying. I don't agree with the change, but it is what it is. When I look at our tasks on all these lists and I look at specifically, and maybe I shouldn't, but I look at what on the list of 18 or 19 that are Pelican selling this morning this year. But yet, cost wise, I'm paying a hell of a price and we got all the volunteers. It just doesn't, the scales don't balance well. I don't know what the alternative is, but the scales don't balance.
Let's, let's, you and I talk.
Okay.
Please. And I mean, if you guys want to entertain the $20 per person per month, that's.
That's a small price. We got what, we're spending millions of dollars. I mean, that, that's peanuts as far as I'm concerned, the nickels and dimes. I don't want to waste money though. I don't want to pay for, you know, the Lee County things, that's 40,000 a year. To do 20,000 a month, that's heck long, come to 2,000 a year. I would just like to have a good comfortable feeling how we're allocating and I don't have that. And that's all I got.
Anything else? That's it, Ed?
Nothing.
The only thing I have is, have we got any, oh, sorry, I thought I started with you. I always start with.
You always.
I always start with you.
You went to the first.
Because I think you're doing some, sorry Kara, go ahead.
Okay. We, at the last meeting, we finished up your evaluation and voted on the increase and all that sort of stuff. So between now and the next meeting, could you provide for the board your goals now for the next fiscal year? And if you feel you have adequate resources in order to complete those goals or where you might feel you need changes? And so what are your goals for next year? Do you have the resources to do it? And approximation of time to complete.
To complete, yeah, I can walk on that.
And then if we could have that as an agenda item at the, the second meeting in July.
Yep.
Just so we can all review it so we know that this is.
The expectation.
This is, yeah.
And if you have any suggestions in the meantime of any goals, please feel free to email me.
And then last, the last two years, we've had a board workshop in which we had the facilitator come and all that sort of stuff. I think we are on a path now with setting our goals and everything early. I don't know that we necessarily need that this year.
Okay.
I don't know what the feeling of the other.
I agree with you.
I'd like to say that one thing.
I agree with you, Kara. I think we're in a good process.
Right. And I think some of the other things aren't gonna be worked out at a workshop like that, so, yeah. The elephant in the room hasn't changed. Let's put it that way. So I think we just take it meeting by meeting and move forward.
That's it?
Yes.
Right. Just wanna, have we received anything from ponds committee regarding the Gateway Pond standard?
So Peter, the gentleman that did.
Aldette.
Aldette, that they, the pond subcommittee, he originally wrote the Pelican one. He's been out of town and had some other things come up. So we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
That we're gonna meet with him, staff and myself, and he, he wrote the Pelican ponds standard over there.
He wrote the book.
The plan is to get a working draft put together over the next couple of months, get it back to the pond subcommittee, back through, through that channel and then back in front of you for your consideration.
Okay, so I just think clarification, because I didn't think we were starting the document from scratch. I thought we're keeping the document we have and then it's gonna be a pine and or merge and.
To dry it.
Okay, okay. That's it. I don't have anything else.
The only thing, the last thing I have before we adjourn, I will be flying out of town, I'll be going out of town next Thursday to Indiana for my grandfather's celebration of life and then afterwards to North Carolina. As always, you can call me, you can email me, I'll be checking emails, but I'll be returning on July 7th. So I will be out June 26th, returning to the office on July 7th.
I guess, now we did a profile.
You guys, yeah, pretty much. You guys take pictures for me.
All right. So the 28.
I'm gonna be going the very same time as you.
There we go. You're going a little further north on the property.
On the mission.
Okay, so that's it? Make them watch the journey.
All right, thank you.
Second.
It was nice to see their breaking graph, more than just shoveling dirt at the building for trying to do.
See you in a month.
Yep.